Here we go. All right, welcome to the city council study session Thursday, February 2nd, 2023. Two items on the agenda, the first being discussion regarding the use of asset forfeiture funds. Deputy Chief, would you like to?
I will.
Take the wheel.
Good evening, everyone. Glad you all can make it to the presentation. Just a little nicer weather tonight than it was on Tuesday. All right, we'll get started. Use of seizure funds, basically control under two statutes, one state, one federal. State funds, the city's arrangement with the district attorney's office regarding seizures and forfeitures, forfeitures, is governed by 632506. Forfeited funds not used by the state are to be maintained in a revolving fund in the office of the county treasurer where the property was seized. Under 632506, district attorneys can share forfeited funds with municipalities. Norman Police Department agreement with the DA's office, 75% NPD, 25% Cleveland County District Attorney's Office. While 2506 requires district attorneys to use forfeited funds, and it's 2506 L3 in particular, subsection L3, solely for enforcement of controlled dangerous substance laws, drug abuse prevention, and drug abuse education. There is no such limitation for municipal police departments. The use of federal funds is governed by 21881. Distribution is based on an agency's participation in the case. Guide to equitable sharing for state and local law enforcement agencies. Put out by DOJ states that forfeited funds can be used for patrol cars and surveillance vehicles. State law does not limit how municipal police departments can spend forfeited funds seized by municipal police department. DOJ has expressly asserted that seized funds forfeited under federal law can be used to purchase patrol and surveillance vehicles. I'll back it up. The Norman Police Department proposes using forfeited funds to purchase law enforcement And our state account, we have 1,274,296. The federal, we have 247,429, for a grand total of 1,521,725. Cost to purchase and outfit a police unit will be 75,000. That's kind of a conservative guess. I think it's almost another 70,000 more per unit. I'm sorry, 7,000 more per vehicle. To purchase 14 of the police vehicles on the fleet replacement list, the cost would roughly be 1,500,000. Staff proposals including this amount in the fiscal year ending in 2024 budget. Any questions?
Councilmember Torture.
Let's go ahead and start. Can you explain the breakdown between state and federal? What is the, what does that mean? The federal, is it a federal fund, federal money, or how does it, what does it mean?
It's the same. State has a fund that when money is, or property is seized, it goes into, it goes into a fund. And the same thing on the federal end, you know? So when we work, say, interdictions or any type of activity like that, it depends on which group we're working with, organization or department we're working with, if we're working with the federal, that money seized fund is under the federal guidelines, and that money is seized under the fed's guidelines. If we're working with state, state agencies, then it goes in state.
Okay.
So that's why it's been federal and state. And the fed's over, their guidelines umbrella over all of it.
Got it. I've got a couple of other questions too to kind of ask them.
Yeah, go ahead.
These are coming from constituents about when they saw this on the agenda last week. But what is the city's liability if the money is ever used and the person is found innocent? What's the process?
If the person is found innocent, they get their money back. We don't seize, we can't forfeit and take their money permanently if they're being adjudicated through a normal court process and found innocent.
So it's not put in a bank account, it's, we're just?
It would be in property custody until, as long as there's evidence, it stays in property custody.
Okay, so no interest paid out then?
No.
Okay, thank you. For now.
Deputy Chief, when that, if somebody was accused, if they came and took $10 out of my car, and because I had it there and I shouldn't, and does that money go into this account, or is it already adjudicated by the time it gets to the accounts that you were talking about?
It would have to be adjudicated going to any of these accounts. It would have to go through the process.
So there's no, there's no reach back from the public or from anybody else to take any of that money back out of these accounts?
No, if I'm understanding your question properly, no, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Torture.
Oh, she put her hand over hers.
Yeah.
It's okay. So if I'm understanding this correctly with the summary, state law does not limit how municipal police departments can spend forfeiture funds? So is it, so can you, I guess, break that down a little bit more? I think that we were hoping to hear a bit more nuance around how and what can be purchased with. I was trying, I pulled up the statute, but it's pretty lengthy, so I couldn't read it very quickly.
City legal, Rick Knighton, explain a little further.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
And I'm going to be looking at 2506L. And if you look at the way that that statute is worded, it has a limitation with regard to what district attorney's offices can use those forfeited funds for. The statute, as a general rule, talks about enforcement with regard to drug laws for DA's offices. And then it goes on to talk about the agreement that a municipal police department can enter into with the district attorney's office, and it does not put that same limitation on municipal police department than it does on district attorney's offices. So.
My question is, are there limits on what we can spend that money on as a municipality? Or does it have to be strictly for law enforcement purposes?
There is, though, that there are any limits. But to be on the safe side, assuming a court were to come in and apply that provision with regard to district attorneys to municipal police departments, to be, our legal advice would be, I would limit it to law enforcement expenditures.
Okay, but law enforcement expenditures could be, you know, community outreach from the police department. It could be, I'm just trying to understand like the scope of what these funds could potentially be used for. And I think that that's what we've been trying to clarify. Like, are there, could this be used for mobile crisis response that is, you know, in conjunction with the police department? Could this be used for preventative outreach for like drugs in this, you know, with a partnership with the schools? Like, I'm trying to understand, like, how do we use this in a community-based way?
Could be, some of the difficulties that I think I hear our finance department talk about in terms of those types of expenditures has to do with, are you spending it for a one-time expenditure that you're not going to necessarily have to find money in the future to come up with to continue that? So some of the stuff they're talking about is ongoing expenditures. And it can be really difficult to rely on this funding source for those ongoing expenditures, whereas if you were talking about a one-time expenditure for something like a vehicle or at least something that's going to have a longer shelf life, probably more appropriate to use it for those as opposed to something that's going to be a recurring expenditure every fiscal year, because you're not going to be able to rely on this as a funding source that's reliable over time.
Sure, I understand that. And our finance department does say that for lots of different things. I think we say that for the general fund. We say that for, you know, and I think that we're fiscally prudent enough to understand, like, what is a capital expense, a one-time expenditure, and then what is, you know, something that is being paid for, like staffing that would be a year over year. But I think that we could get creative in how we're doing that with the things that I propose. But, and then, just to clarify, because I'm talking about what we can use, under the federal guidelines, it just states in here that the funds can be used for patrol cars and surveillance vehicles, but what are the other things that it could potentially be used for the federal, on the federal side?
So that language actually comes from a Department of Justice publication that they put out with regard to their understanding of what you can use those funds for. So it talks specifically about law enforcement expenditures. It talks specifically about, if you're talking about patrol vehicles here, and that publication specifically references patrol and surveillance vehicles. There are some other law enforcement things that are mentioned in that particular publication, but they're all law enforcement.
And I have an article from that publication, if you, just a real quick paragraph, kind of help explain a little bit of that. U.S. Department of Justice has published information which asserts that permissible uses of funds received under 21881 include but are not limited to the following: law enforcement equipment, most of it has a law enforcement nexus; the costs associated with the purchase, lease, maintenance, operation of law enforcement equipment for use by law enforcement personnel that supports law enforcement activities; for example, furniture, file cabinets, office supplies, telecommunications equipment, copiers, safes, fitness equipment, computers, computer accessories, software, body armor, uniforms, firearms, radios, cellular tele, not, and that's not exhaustive list, but it has the law enforcement nexus.
Okay.
And to go back to your earlier comment about what state limits, you know, the use and what we can use for, you talked about for drug prevention and education, it says, specifically under 2506L3, requires district attorneys to use forfeited funds solely for enforcement of controlled dangerous substance laws, drug abuse prevention, and drug abuse education. So there is no such limitation for municipal police departments. But we try to adhere to federal and state as far as those usages.
Yeah, just trying to, my questions are really just trying to understand the, I guess, the nuance between what is allowable for those federal funds that you have broken down for us, and then what is allowable under the state funds that we've got in there? So, yeah, just trying to clarify some understanding, because I think that's where some of the confusion has been, and just we want to understand, I want to understand what we are legally allowed to do or not do. So I'll let others know.
Councilmember Torture, have you done?
Well, you know what, she asked the question that I was going to ask, but let me take it a step further. Have we ever used funds in the past for other programs other than the nexus, the law enforcement nexus program?
It all has, as far as I'm aware of, and Rick may be able to add anything that I missed, you know, it's always been a law enforcement nexus. Even when it's dealing with the community, with like the juvenile shelter, we helped out with that a few times, that's police, we had places to take the kids, we were involved, it's a law enforcement nexus. So unless I'm missing something, Rick, I don't think we've ever used it for anything other than a law enforcement nexus.
I don't, I don't know.
You don't know? Well, would you agree that, would you agree or disagree that, like, the mobile crisis unit, would that be considered part of the law enforcement nexus?
Could be if it had a drug, probably the law enforcement and the drug nexus to it would put us a little closer to where we need to be. For instance, if it's crisis responding to someone that's in crisis based on drug use or overdose or something like that. It may stretch a little bit to go outside of the area.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Hi, Chief. All right, you know I used to buy these things, these cars that we're talking about here. Daryl?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, we demoted you, but you're over here.
Yes. We rolled into a COMC meeting here about eight minutes, we didn't want to disturb.
I'll go fast. Okay, so what, or Anthony, don't hurt him. Okay, what do we have in the budget every year for vehicles?
Actually, we've got the two guys here that put that budget together. Mike usually comes up with the priority list on which ones are really getting too expensive to maintain, and a little bit of flexibility, that one's a little better than that one. We'll replace the worst ones first, but.
Capital outlay, I'm going to say the average in the last five years has been about 2.2 million. A couple, three years ago, that bought about 26 vehicles, last year about 16.
Yeah.
This year, the budget has not gone up. The budget has been set, and of course, everything else has gone up.
And these are replacing, not adding to, right?
These are replacing, yes. It's on our fleet replacement list.
Okay. Okay, I'll stop there for now.
Ones that you're replacing would necessarily not only be mechanical, but the ones that were damaged in the hailstorm two years ago?
Several of those that are on the replacement list has been damaged, yeah.
Are we going to get rid of most of those?
I would say a fair amount of those, yes, there.
Thank you.
I think one of the oldest ones is a 2007 model, but they're still, you know, in daily operation.
Oh, Lord.
Catch them up and drive them.
Here we have an evaluation process, the bike has used for many years.
It runs better than the old.
There will be 150 city vehicles on the replacement list this year. We might be lucky to do 20 with the budget. And some of those 20 will be police cars, but they're all ranked according to the, kind of the worst, the ones that have to get out of the system, get replaced. Invariably, a third to a half are police vehicles.
But not DC's vehicle. You get a Cadillac.
I keep it for a little while longer.
Councilman?
You had mentioned that these funds are held by the county?
The county.
In which the crime occurs, or I think.
Clerk.
Okay. Does that mean all the cities in Cleveland County have access to that 1.5 million, or is that solely a number for Norman?
That's just ours, our group.
And how did we determine that that was the number that we kind of?
The MOU between us and the district attorney's office outlines what percentages. 75% for us, 25% for the DA's office.
Right.
Over $1,000.
I guess my question is kind of, were all those crimes related to Norman?
See, I think the issue is this. This is seizure and forfeiture.
Right.
Understanding, the first part of the process is seizure.
Right.
The seizure part is, the police go out, they believe somebody is connected with some reason that they can seize it, so they seize it.
Right.
The money is seized under state law, it is put into the custody of the county treasurer.
Right.
So the county treasurer takes the seizure funds, puts it into account, and maintains it in that account until a court determines how it's going to be distributed.
Okay.
If there, once the money is seized, then there's a separate forfeiture action, where the DA's office has to go for the court and convince the court that this is money that's appropriately, should be forfeited under the statute, and then, once the money is forfeited, treasurer will send the city a check, then we put it out to our account, it's in the DA check, or it goes into their account. So those funds are in an account that's already forfeited, so it's already in a city account, waiting for council to make a determination of how it should be approved.
In non-lawyer speak, yeah, it's associated with our cases, so they know it's ours.
So that 1.5 was all seized in Norman, not Cleveland County? Okay, that's what I was trying to, sorry.
Okay, so as Rick was talking, it kind of dawned on me that there's a difference, potentially, between seizure and forfeiture.
Yes.
Right? So I think maybe getting some clarification about what is the difference between the two, because I think a lot of times we use those terms interchangeably. So can you clarify on what is the seizure aspect of it, and then the forfeiture?
The seizure aspect of it essentially like, it's almost, think of it as if when the police department goes out and seizes any other evidence for potential crime, it's held by the state. If it's my cell phone, it's going to be held in property custody at the PD. If it's these funds that are being seized because there's some basis allegedly for forfeiting them, it's going to be held by the county treasurer. So my phone's in property custody because it's evidence of some crime, doesn't mean the city is either.
Right.
It's just in possession. The same is true for the seizure funds. It's just in the county's possession until ultimately a determination is made as to how it can be disposed of. The disposal part requires a separate lawsuit, there are provisions on the statute with regard to, if you read the statute, and you talked about how long it was, it talks about those funds not being replevable. Essentially, a replevin action is an action by a citizen saying, you have my property there, and I want the court to make you give it back to me. For seizure funds, they're not replevable, the DA's office has discretion at some point in time to go file a lawsuit, again, separate from the criminal action, a separate lawsuit saying, Your Honor, I believe that these funds that were seized should be subject to forfeiture because they are the fruits of some illegal activity. And the court will make a determination as to, do I believe they are, or do I believe they're not? If the court says, I don't believe that there are, it goes back to whoever they were taken from. If the court says, yes, I do believe they were, then again, it goes to the government for, as under state law, it's pursuant to that agreement between us and the district attorney's office to send out a injunction.
Okay, so in a short summary, seizure funds are funds that have, are like the items funds, whatever, that have not been adjudicated? And then forfeiture is this money that we have said, like, this has gone through the courts, and it has been forfeited based on this legal action? And so the money that we have listed out here as seizure fund balances is actually forfeiture? Okay, I just want to be clear about the language that we're using, so we understand that we're not just taking money or property from people as a seizure, and then we get to spend that kind of just like willy-nilly. It's, it has to go through the courts, and then it is forfeiture funds that ultimately we have access to, to spend.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you notice, your agenda says asset forfeiture funds, not seizure. Because of.
I'm just, I'm just saying, but the presentation says seizure funds, so to make sure that the community understands that, like, there is a difference between.
Name your chief for that, man.
Okay. Not deputy chief's fault. I just, I just want to understand, because, I mean, I'm learning through this process too, and just being really clear about the language that we're using, so our community understands, like, what are we, what funds are we actually using, and how, what process do they have to go through for us to be able to use them out of this account?
And I do want to clarify something else, as far as where the funds are coming from. We talked about all in Norman, well, that's, we have three different, really, main avenues of investigating illegal drug activity. You either have the street-level patrol officers, officers will get information and they'll investigate it, or we'll have District 21, which is our interdiction unit on the interstates, doing interdictions, and which aren't always, even in Cleveland County, they partner with other agencies, and they do, you know, work the interstates and get seizures from that avenue. And then, of course, we have guys on the DEA task force, which is federal, and they also, you know, gets assets on the federal level. So it's not all like Norman residents, you know, it's, you know.
Sure.
Depending on which unit is actually working.
Just another, I guess, thing that I want to, I guess, stone that I want to overturn. If we're talking about using funds for something like mobile crisis response, and we are, I mean, I would argue that mental health and crisis is something that our law enforcement agencies are doing right now. So is that not a nexus to law enforcement? If we were, if we were to use it for some kind of vehicle or something to help support?
We would have to look at and see, yes.
Okay. Just maybe offering some other opportunities.
I'm not the attorney, but I, you know.
Rick shook his head back there.
Yeah, Rick, uh-oh. But what it seems, looks like to be in state statute is that the state has already divided that out and put the county, which is in my contention, is in charge of mental health things. Nothing wrong with cooperating, nothing wrong with doing anything else, but in helping the district attorney to do that. And they haven't seemed to restrict what we spend the money on. So they're restricted, but we're not. And so that kind of gives us a clue, in my opinion, of how we should spend that money. Nothing wrong with, not crisis teams, but mental health things that we could be doing. But it just gives us some guidance, just the way that the law is written. Just, that's opinion, that's not fact. Councilmember Holley.
Yeah, Sue, appreciate the presentation and the information. My issue with this has really been the integrity of the adjudication process is in question, in my opinion. The process in which someone's property and funds can be forfeited is extremely questionable. And the district attorney's office will argue in court, we don't have to prove anything. The person whose property is, they need to prove that their property was not used in a crime. And that's backwards, in my opinion. The government should always have the burden, in my opinion. But I've sat in a courtroom and listened to the DA specifically say that. It's not our responsibility to prove that this property was used in a crime. The defendant, or the person whose property it was, they need to prove it. Thankfully, in the experience I had, the district court judge did not agree with that point of view and ruled in our favor. But then the district attorney's office appealed that ruling to the state Supreme Court after we had been found not guilty of criminal charges. So we were found not guilty of criminal charges, the district attorney's office continued to say, doesn't matter, we believe that property is still illegal. It doesn't matter what the jury said, it doesn't matter that they were found not guilty of criminal charges, our office believes that property was used in a crime, and we're going to pursue keeping it. And they did, all the way to the state Supreme Court. So imagine a regular person having to hire attorneys and litigate this for months. This went on for six months after we were found not guilty of criminal charges. It's not a very quick process to go to the Supreme Court and get an opinion back. And so the effort that a person would have to go through to get their property back just for being suspected of a crime, and in some cases, no charges being filed, no conviction at all. So that's been my biggest concern about these funds is uncertainty about the legitimacy of where they all came from. I don't believe Norman PD is out actively trying to take people's property for their budget. It doesn't seem to be as big of an issue in bigger cities like ours and places where there's a bigger tax base. It's more of an issue in rural areas and counties. And so part of why I wanted to discuss this issue further was, one, to discuss ethically, morally, how we should spend the funds that we do have, and then, how should we go about accepting those funds in the future? I kind of lean on, we should maybe have a higher standard. If the city of Norman's going to accept it, then we require this information that the state doesn't require, the DA doesn't require, but maybe we do. So that's kind of discussion that I want to have, along with how do we spend the money that we have, because I do think we need to figure out what to do with it, whether it's police cars or whatnot. But I think it was 36 states since 2010 have passed civil asset forfeiture, seizure, and seizure reform laws, and a few states have, for all intents and purposes, banned it. So there's been a lot of movement on trying to reform and tighten it up so that it isn't abused, because the nickname of this program is policing for profit. That's what a lot of people refer to it as, because that's the appearance that it gives off. And so that discussion about a potential higher standard for the city of Norman to accept those funds, and then the discussion about what it can be used for, and what I recall in my time on council, we have, we have used them for honor guard uniforms for police and fire, if I recall, one year. I feel like we used them to purchase the fire rescue boats one year, and then we used them to purchase the Harley-Davidson motorcycles for the motor unit also. So those are all public safety-related issue, related pieces of equipment, and one-time, well, kind of one-time purchases. So one of the other items I'd want to maybe talk about that could be added, you know, we've had someone mention in our last meeting about the body cameras. I was kind of shocked, because we've not really had them that long, but that they were not working as well.
I think it's like five years.
So that, you know, that would be an item I'd be interested in looking at, that would be a use, I feel like, most people would feel like, would be beneficial to the police and the public. So that would be one way. The police car issue, I get that, we've talked a lot about the fleet and stuff, and keeping the Crown Victorias running, so. Some of them are better than the newer ones we have, actually, that run, continue to go better, so. But that type of thing, and then I've read a lot about how forfeiture funds nationally, you know, there's, like, they're not typically used to support or help, like, victims of crime, programs like that, maybe because programs can't be used to fund it with this funds, but that's one of the things, is there, are there things that we have in the department? Are there rape kit backlogs? Are there some other sort of thing that needs some one-time injection of funds that would help the police department get something off there, check something off the list that needed to be done?
It would really help as if we were able to utilize seizure funds to purchase something else that we need, and then use funds in our budget to purchase just those things. Because trying to do the things we're trying to purchase with seizure funds and that, you know, sometimes we run out of money. But if we're able to do that with seizure funds, and then that leaves, frees up extra money to do things, just what you're saying, to do, without a whole lot of. money to do things, just what you're saying, to do, without a whole lot of finagling and everything else.
My apprehension of that is just, I don't want us to look at it as a free pot of money. I think that's the wrong way to look at it, and I would want, not want to be reliant on it, like. So not funding something that's a reoccurring? I think that makes sense, but I am cautious about using it as, well, we can, we can use the forfeiture fund for that instead, or having some reason to rely on it.
Mm-hmm.
If you get them saying, you know. So definitely open to discussing ways that we can use what we have, for sure, and I'd like definitely to think about the body cam thing.
Prior to starting that discussion, do you have a question that we need to answer?
Yes. So just to kind of pick up where Councilmember Holman left off, talking about the future, I have been digging into it and seeing national movement with, like, 36 states kind of wanting to get away from it. People on the right and the left, it's pretty nonpartisan issue, see it as the burden of proof is very low for the public. So do we have to take that money? Like, if we see other people are just deciding that they don't want to fund things at all like that, are we legally required to take it?
I suppose the answer is no, we're not, I mean, the provision that we're talking about authorizes the district attorney's office to enter into agreement with municipalities with regard to those funds. So I guess you could say, DA's office were not going to enter into agreement with you, so effectively, the DA's office could.
And I mention that because when this came up for a vote to fund the things that we, what vote was that, like, in November? It's pretty recent. I don't think the public opinion has changed that much, and we didn't use forfeiture funds to buy anything. It was all from the general fund.
Part of the difficulty with this issue, just from my perspective, through certain things, not really understanding how this process works, there are horror stories that you can see in the, in the, in the press where people's funds have been, for all intents and purposes, improperly taken. There's no justification for taking them, and the difficulty is, under the statute, the district attorney, where I said, it's not replevinable, which means you, the person whose property was taken, I can't go to court and file an action against the district attorney's office to recover my funds, because the statute says I can't do that. The only way for me to get my funds back or to adjudicate that is for the district attorney's office to file an action, and then I get to go in that action to try to get the funds A lot of the forfeitures are the result of stops where an officer has probable cause to search, funds, a bunch of cash in the trunk, and asks the driver or the passengers who's this, and they go, I have no idea, I don't know who's this. Those get seized, put into an account. If the person whose fund those belong to came forward and said, yeah, those are mine, that's mine, I want it back, then they would have the opportunity to get, to litigate that to try to recover those funds. But oftentimes, what happens is, nobody comes back to reclaim those funds. They'll have to go through the same process, as if it were an individual, to get forfeited, but then the question becomes, your officers were involved in the seizure of these funds. And the way the statute and the agreements are written, part of it is recovering, the city recovering some of the cost associated with those types of activities. Now, there are those, and I've heard instances where things like, I'm driving across country, I'm moving from New York to California, I've got all the money in the world I had with me to start up my life out in California, I get stopped, my funds get seized, you know, and I think what Councilmember Holman was talking about is, a lot of times in some smaller municipalities where they do have issues with regard to funding, I've heard stories where a district attorney's office will say, okay, I'll split it with you. And the difficulty you're having is, I'm in transition, I don't have the funds to come back, to pay an attorney, to go to court, to try to prove that, yes, these funds are mine, half of my money is better than none of it, and I'll go ahead and agree to let the DA's office take half of mine. And yes, those are problematic, those are legislative issues. I mean, that's an issue that needs to be resolved at the legislature with regard to how to resolve some of those issues. But for us, could you say? If you have funds, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman.
Where would, what a public defender, where would that, what kind of role would that play in this?
Public defenders only got to defend the criminal part of the case if there was one, so they wouldn't, remember, the asset forfeiture part, the civil part.
I'm just wondering if there's a workaround to, like, you know, letting these people, I don't think, it's not justified in every case, obviously, but, you know, being able to challenge this and not have to go through the expense and the labor of hiring an expensive attorney that, you know.
Well, I've talked about it with my private practitioners, the resolution is to take off that part of the provision that doesn't allow the citizens to go follow the government. Because if it's my money, and it truly is my money, legitimate money, I should have the ability.
Right.
From day one, to go to the courthouse and file an action against the district attorney's office, saying, this is my money and I want it back.
Right. And if it's legitimate yours and there's no crime committed, there shouldn't be an issue with that.
Well, part of the issue, and a little bit of it, where it gets, can get complicated is, you don't necessarily have to have a criminal conviction to have a forfeiture. Because sometimes criminal cases are resolved on technicalities. You know, a finding of not guilt is not the same as a finding of innocence.
Right.
I may be guilty.
Right.
It's just, some police officer did something they weren't supposed to do.
Clear, clear.
And I get this evidence excluded from trial, and there's no other evidence to show that I committed the offense. Doesn't mean he didn't commit it, it just means, on some occasions, criminal cases don't result in conviction because of reasons other than innocence.
Sure.
In that same set of circumstances, you could have a forfeiture action, because the burdens are different. The burden, the best way for me to explain it always is the OJ trial. A citizen is not guilty of the murders, but in civil action, he was found liable to the heirs of those two victims' estates, because the burden is not the same. The burden in a criminal case is beyond a reasonable doubt, the burden in a civil case is more likely than not. I have to prove 51%.
Gotcha.
So if in a criminal case, the DA's office can't prove beyond a reasonable doubt that you committed the offense, but in a civil case, they can prove more likely than not that you did, that would be an occasion when a criminal, you didn't get convicted, you didn't get found guilty in a criminal case, but yet there was a forfeiture case where you were found to be liable for forfeiture purposes. Doesn't happen that often, because most district attorneys, if they lose a criminal case, are probably going to say, hey, we're just going to let the forfeiture part go. But unfortunately, there are those areas where that can happen.
Right. Right. Yeah, and I guess the reason I'm asking is I want to make sure that we're protecting the people where they've been in in the negative situation, but also giving us the ability to pursue legal action in the cases that warrant it, obviously, so.
Councilman.
Is it, is it illegal to travel with a large sum of money on your person?
It isn't. But that's the issue that goes back to, you said, in your case, you've heard district attorneys say that they don't have to prove anything, and you've heard judges reject that. I think the judges in this case are correct.
Yeah.
Because in that case, the DA's office is the plaintiff, it's my burden to prove whatever the elements of whatever it is I need to prove, and it's not necessarily the person who seized the funds, not obligation to prove anything. But the difficulty comes in, like we said before, there've been occasions where I think that this process has been misused, so does people, where, like I said earlier, you've got a lot of cash, you're going cross-country, get stopped, you get your funds taken, that's difficult for you. I mean, because most of us are independently wealthy, I don't have another pocket of cash I can go pay my expenses with, this is what I was going to use to take care of myself, and now I don't have it. And somebody comes in and says, I'll give you that, I'll split it with you. It's like, what am I going to do? I mean, that's difficulty. You probably don't have the money to hire an attorney to get any advice, it's just, I'm just going to do that. And I think those are clearly misuses of that process. But again, it's not illegal to drive with a lot of cash, but it almost is a, in this day and time, if you were asking me for my advice, I would have probably try another way to do that, because you're putting yourself at risk.
So there's, it's noted, there's a vast majority of these cases tend to be an amount or a value of property less than $10,000. And so not like a big criminal enterprise here, and, or at least on an individual basis. And then, again, back to, is someone going to hire an attorney to try to get back, it's going to cost more than the value of the property that was taken, pay an attorney, spend more on the attorney to get back the property you had, and then you're still, when it's all over, you're still in the hole quite a bit from that. And so that's the, the, again, the issue I've had, is just the integrity of the federal and state programs when it comes to how these funds are collected. Former council member Dillingham, Carol Dillingham, I don't know if she's still in the DA's office. Yeah, so I had talked to her about this a few years ago and asked, how could we have a higher standard in Norman, perhaps, or what could we do to make it more certain that these funds were legitimate, I guess? She talked about how you can't always get a conviction, there's not always a defendant, or like, people say, it's not mine, and then you never see them again, right? So what do you do with that money? And her thing was, well, she talked about, if you can't get a conviction, she talked about an agreed order. I don't know if that required a person also to be in attendance.
It would.
It would? So would there be any way you know of, if there is nobody to claim it? I don't know, I mean, because I guess the way it is already, nobody's claiming it, so it's just sitting there.
It's just like, I mean, it's just like any other found property. An officer, you know, finds a suitcase with $100,000 out on the sidewalk, I mean, we're booking in a property custody, there's a time for somebody to come in and claim it, and then if that doesn't happen, it just becomes surplus, and it goes to the government or goes to the entity that found it. That's the difficulty with those instances, what we're talking about, and, you know, part of it has to do with, you know, drug contractors are smart, too. And they know, I suspect that they understand, we're going to put this man's vehicle, we're going to put this person in there, he's going to drive from here to there, and we know we're going to lose part of that. That's just part of the, that's just for the important of the business. And if I'm the person in the vehicle, I'm not taking the fall for that $100,000 that's in the trunk that, you know, the dog hit on it because it's probably been around a bunch in the water, I have no idea who's it is. And they're more than willing to even sign an affidavit saying that property is not mine. That's the difficulty in those cases, coming to what you do. What do you do with those funds? Because nobody's coming in to claim it. I mean, the person who probably truly owns it's not going to come in and claim it. The person that was on it.
I think we're missing the key point here, there's a drug nexus, I mean, just because you have a lot of money going down the highway in the car, doesn't mean it's, we can take that money. You have to connect that to some illegal activity. You just can't be, I'm speeding and take $100,000. You know, if we go through in your gas tank, we find, you know, four, five, six, 10 kilos of coke or meth strapped to your gas tank, you're going to, we're going to seize that. So it's not just someone that has a bunch of money going down the highway. I think we're, that's not what this is about, it's not what interdiction's about. And so I think we're getting some things kind of confused, as far as, we're just going to take your money because you got money.
Well, there have been cases like that, though. Like last year in Nevada, the military veteran was going across country, and he didn't have any drugs, he didn't have anything, but he had a large amount of cash.
That has to happen here in Norman.
Right, right.
And number two, if you have an issue with what's going on with the forfeiture laws and civil asset, approach your legis, like Rick says, approach your legislature, get the laws changed, work it from that avenue. You know, tighten it up, tighten up what we're doing across the country. But having your citizens pay for something out of general fund, when you have monies there from illegal drug activity, I have a hard time, you know, wrapping my brain around that. I mean, I understand your position, I truly do, you know, and I respect that. But I'm just saying that, you know, there ought to be a better way.
Drug activity is my question.
Pardon me?
Is it all from, for sure?
In Norman?
All from illegal drug.
In Norman, yeah, I can tell you right now, in Norman?
That balance.
Because I've been here, yeah, it's been drug activity, some drug nexus, something connected to that type of illegal activity.
Last time we had this discussion with Chief Humphrey, his exact response was, I can assure you, most of it is. Most of it is.
Well, he's kind of a politician in him, too.
Sure.
Chief, you know.
But that always stuck out to me, so we don't know for sure.
I've been here longer than Chief Humphrey, I've been here almost 38 years, you know, and I will tell you, if you go past the last 10 to 15 years, I don't know what the, I'm telling you right now, I don't know what those guys, 10, 15, 20 years ago, but I can tell you, in the last 10 to 12 years, just from what I've seen, records and what they've done, it's all had a drug nexus. Now, you know, to my knowledge, but I've never seen anything other than the drug nexus.
Okay.
So.
I appreciate it.
Um, I could shed some perspective on the, on the one part about, like, maybe what some of our citizens are thinking around that, because.
Are they thinking, or do they know for a fact?
I mean, didn't they come out in November and tell us what they thought about civil asset forfeiture?
There's a lot of things I heard in November that wasn't true, can that right now? So, you know.
This comes from a Libertarian article from 2020, says data from 21 states.
From what article?
Policing for Profit, that is a Libertarian organization that keeps track of these things. And to say it's a nonpartisan issue is to include all those backgrounds. So they say, data from 21 states show half of all currency forfeitures are worth less than $1,300, hardly the stuff of vast criminal enterprises, and far less than it would cost to hire an attorney to fight back. Moreover, policing for profit finds forfeiture proceeds mostly support law enforcement budgets, not crime victims or community programs. In 2018, agencies in 13 states with expenditure data spent almost no proceeds on victims and just 9% on community programs on average. So if you're a voter in Ward 4 that I'm hearing from, you want to see more equity in, like, the community, and this, you were telling us that, like, no, we're going to spend it on cars or body cams. Maybe the public will like body cams, but I don't think they want to see it go back to the budget, they want to fund it from the general fund, which is what we did in November.
We do argue that those body cams, those things, help keep our community safe, hold us to better, to higher accountability.
And we'll see if they'll go for it.
Huh?
We'll see if they'll go for it.
I've been saying, you know, you know, we have to consider all of these things. And again, when you start quoting statistics, was that study done, what have we done, what study was done in Norman that goes towards those statistics?
We have a PSST coming up, too, so that would be interesting what they tell us.
Sure would, but that study from Libertarian, that's people from, I don't know, from what state jurisdiction, I don't know, that's been vetted, I have no idea.
Nationally, there's a trend from left to right that people have a problem with this. So I'm going to leave it there.
I can go on the internet and Google and come up with something just the opposite. On the internet, you can find all sorts, I'm just saying, all sorts of stuff. And we're in the internet world now.
I'm going to turn it over to Lauren.
Social media world.
Um, I mean, I think the point that we're missing here is that we are a legislative body that does get to decide as a collective unit how funds are spent within our community. So I don't think that it is unfair for us to be asking about where funds are coming from, how they can be spent, like, the whole discussion, I think, is.
Saying it is unfair? I'm not saying that at all.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying that there is a retort back to everything that we are saying, and I think that.
That's what the conversation is, that's what I'm sorry, but go ahead.
I mean, I think, let us finish what we're saying before you just disregard or dispute. And I think that that's part of, I guess, my issue is that, like, I want to understand at a more deep level, right? Like, the reason that we're here asking questions is because we can hear things from the community that may not be true, we want to understand what is fact, what is fiction. I think that that is our job as, you know, elected representatives of our community. And I'm not saying that, you know, ultimately, police cars are not a good use of, you know, these funds, because I do understand the conversation around, if we spend it on, you know, police cars, then we have funds to spend on other things that might be, you know, needed for our community. So I think we're just really, this conversation is really trying to, for me at least, trying to understand, how are we underpinning all this? Where did this money come from? It, I mean, it's a study session, right? Like, trying to understand where we're, where we're coming from and what our community would like to see done. So, yes, we're talking about a lot of what ifs, what has happened in other communities, like, to the point that you're making about, like, most of this is drug money coming through our community. I completely understand that that may be the case. But also, I think we have a right to ask questions that our citizens are also asking, so that we can understand. so that we can understand what, you know, what we're working with. And I think getting some clarification on, you know, what is the difference for me on seizure and forfeiture funds and how that process works and the legal mechanism? I think your point is well taken, that if it is something that is at a state statute level, that does require advocacy at the state legislature level. But we also have an ability, because this is our municipality's money essentially, to ask questions directly about that. So I think we're having a two-part conversation on what are our role, what is our role within this as a municipality, and then what are things that are outside of our jurisdiction, right? That are state and federal. So I think that it's fair for us to continue to kind of poke at what we can do, how we can use these funds in a manner that would be acceptable to our community, but then also serve the purpose that they are meant to serve. So all of that to say is, like, I don't think that this is, like, we're, we're, some of us maybe, but like, against finding a use for this money, I just feel like we haven't had a full conversation about all of the things that we might, that might be on the table. We just keep getting requests from, you know, okay, well, this isn't going to work, let's try down this avenue. But like, I think what I was trying to ask for earlier in, you know, November and the discussion then was, what are all the things that might be on the table that we're, we haven't even thought about? And can we, you know, go through a list, just like we do with our budget, like, hey, here's all of the things that we might, and then have proposed ideas? So yes, body cams, I think, are very valuable. I can potentially get behind using this for police cars, but I think to Councilmember Hulman's point is that we need to have an idea moving forward, like, what is our policy moving forward? Like, yes, we need to spend the funds that we have in balance and find an avenue, but are there things that we can also do in the future to make sure that this conversation doesn't just continue into, you know, this terrible conversation that we're having about, like, you know, well, what if this happened in Norman, and what if this, well, this happened in another community? Like, I don't, I don't want to get into playing that what-if game. I want to understand, how do we move forward and what is that conversation?
And I'm on board with all of that, right? But when you start quoting statistics from something that's not specific to Norman.
I didn't.
I'm going to give you a counter, because this is the conversation, right? And some of the things I'm saying you may not like, but it's part of the conversation, just like some of the things you say I may not like, but it's part of the conversation. That's how we get from point A to point B. So we may not agree on everything, but I totally understand where the council is coming from and what the council responsibility is, but I have a responsibility to our citizens as well. And if I hear something that's going to be maybe endanger those constituents we have in our community, I'm going to speak up and say something. You know, if I see there's a better way or a different way, or, you know, I'm going to say something. And that's my responsibility to people in my community as well. So we're all the same deal. So if I say something that you think is not going along with what you're saying, it's not that I'm being just willfully contradictory, I'm here to have an honest, sincere conversation that typically in the past, we don't get a chance to have. It's just a one-way street. But here, we can have a discussion. And that's what, that's what I thought we were having, so.
We are.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just saying that, like, sometimes it feels like, like, we don't really have a full conversation about this. As a community, this isn't just about, you know, what's happening around this table. But I think that in, in the terms of, you know, whether we're talking about forfeiture funds or, you know, how we're spending them on certain things in our community, I don't know that we ever have a conversation where everyone comes to the table to, and I'm not saying that this is us right now, but having a conversation that gets to the point of, like, we are listening and understanding, like, what is fact and what is fiction? So of course I would want you to dispute things, but like, I guess the question too is, do we have anything that is alternative to that? Are we getting facts and figures that, you know, we all can agree on? And I haven't seen anything, any research on that. So, okay, Councilmember Grant can pull up something on the internet, but as you said, so can anybody else. So how do we, as a council, sift through all of that noise and have a fact-driven conversation about this particular issue?
It's going to take everyone putting their biases and previous opinions on the shelf and sit down and have a real conversation and not just maybe posturing for, be on the police side or you posturing for people in your ward, you know? That's what it's going to take to have that kind of honest conversation, you know? And I'm all open to, open for that, you know? Those of you that know me and the council, that's just who I am, you know? I'm going to tell you, I'm not going to tell you what you want to hear, I'm going to tell you what you need to hear. And if I'm wrong, I'm willing to accept that as well. I'm willing to hear that from people as well, that, hey, you maybe could have thought of that a little bit more in detail or more in depth. I said, well, yeah, you're right, I could have done it that way. I'm sorry.
I'm done. Okay. Councilmember Hulman?
Okay, well, first of all, Rick, I'm putting law school on the resume, because you done taught us tonight, so thank you for all that. So I understand everyone's passions. I have not forgotten that fun night in November at all. I did not vote for use of seizure funds because people saw the Bearcat is very, very contentious. So Bearcat aside, it was very contentious, okay. People don't like seizure, I get it, I understand people's opinions, so I will not do it for that. But we talked about the budget, et cetera, and being, you know, fiduciary responsibilities to the public, et cetera. We also learned in November that when they came with, like, drones and all these other things that they wanted, and it was asked, well, why didn't you ever ask for this in the budget? And it's, oh, it's not a priority, so it never even made it to us. So they have needs and things that they, so by the laws of the state, have this extra fund available to them. I don't see why we would need to consult the public necessarily as a legislative body to decide how to spend that. We don't ask the people, I mean, I don't know where Chris Mattingly went. You know, I'm sure he would love us, you know, just talk to the public all day long about what they want when it comes to water, because God knows they vote against water. So if we listen to them, you know, they wouldn't pay for anything, right? So we at some point have to say, how do we protect the general fund? We have these funds, like them or not, what is the least offensive way that we could possibly spend this? And I don't see vehicles as this big affront that should be a problem, because they have to be purchased anyway, right? If I call 911, someone's breaking into my house, I don't want, I joke, I would like to see them on mount, like, on horses, but I don't. I really want them to get there as fast as they can. And if they need these vehicles, I don't see why this would erupt into kind of the dialogue that it has. They're not asking for an egregious, they're not asking for a Bearcat, right? This is, this is something that we should all want them to have. So I don't, I don't know why I would, like, oh, let me go to Ward 6, and let me see what Ward 6 wants me to do with this. Like, there's needs, there's things, and we have to make these decisions. So I don't, I don't know, I don't see this as, some of us should maybe come down on that side of the table, everybody. But I don't, I don't see it as something that needs to be some hot debate. I don't know. I just, I don't see this as a, it's a non-starter for me.
Thank you. Outside of the Bearcat, I guess, it's not been about the items to me either. I think we all voted for all the other items to be approved. It's just been the integrity of that funding source. Is it all coming from actual criminal things? Is there an itemized report of where the funds come from that says, when we get it in, this amount came from this case? That's what, this is what happened in that case?
We keep an Excel spreadsheet for auditing purposes, that all the stops, the amounts, we keep a spreadsheet over and out, especially investigation section, right? And it's got this general location, things of that nature. But it has a list of, you know, where things were taken from. That's why I said earlier, you know, you have some on the interstate, you have some, you know, in county, you have some taken, you know, in Norman. And that spreadsheet would have, say, the addresses on it and the amounts. Now, it doesn't break it down, what I've seen, and I don't know if they can or not, I'll check, if it breaks it down to actually property versus actual currency, you know? But we do keep a, an Excel spreadsheet of our activity for auditing purposes.
So the fund balance that we have right now, Norman PD could look and break that down and say, this is where that $1.4 million came from.
We're up to know specifically where each in that, in the balance came from, we'd have to actually go to the DA's office, because that's, it's been disposed, adjudicated through the DA's office. All we keep is just our stops and our initial stuff, not at the, on the front end of it, but not the back end of it. We don't have the information on the back end of it. That would have to come from the DA's office.
Okay. That would say $25,000 came from.
Came from.
This date and was adjudicated this.
And I'll have a case number.
And was adjudicated this, whatever way it was. That would definitely be helpful, I think, to know. It would help me for sure to know where, to know, even to know that we know where it, for sure where it came from helps a lot.
Even if that were a redacted list, where we didn't.
Would have to be heavily redacted.
Everything else. But Rick was shaking his head, no. We just rattle the marbles or?
This is, was something, I'll tell you later.
Okay. More than one, more than one ball on the court.
And I would just mention too, like, when talking about what to potentially spend the balance we have on, like I said, I'm not opposed to considering vehicles. Traffic safety is a big issue for police. It's one of the leading causes of, of death for police officers. I wouldn't even classify it always as accidents, but traffic-related incidents. And I don't know if new cars are necessarily safer or not, but I would assume they might have some better features than the old ones. But that, and then, like I said, the, I feel like, I don't think that would be controversial. And I don't think most of the list of items we approved was controversial at all either. And, but I do think, that's why, that, I forget the citizen that brought up the body cam issue, but like I said, I was surprised, like, I feel like we just got those, but it has been six, five years now.
Technology doesn't last long.
So if that was something we needed to get replenished or replaced, I mean, that would seem like a beneficial use that would benefit the public and the police. Accountability.
May I butt in before you? Would it, would it help your conscience or your reasoning process or whatever, if we got a list of those funds that are in that? Can you request that from the DA? Or do we have to request it?
You would have, yeah, I would. You have to go through and read specific cases, and it would have to be heavily redacted. I mean, and that's the question I would ask them, is can we get, what can we have? All I know is what we have, you know, and it would have to be, again, heavily redacted. You would just probably see a date.
Person.
Norman, and then the amount versus, you know, it would be addresses and all that, all that stuff's protected.
And you, and you say it's drug-related, and I believe you, but it would be, I think, being able to see exactly what is going on.
For clarification purposes, there are other offenses.
Right.
Other than drug offenses that can result in a forfeiture.
But can we request that, Rick? That list?
I would almost think, I sort of don't, to what I think is supposed to happen. I've before tried to look up, and I can do it on a case-by-case basis, because usually if it's a, if it's a case that it's a forfeiture that just involves currency, you see those cases, it's a hundred thousand dollars, Greg Mashburn versus a hundred thousand dollars. Those you can find on OSN pretty easy. The ones that may involve actual individuals may be a little more difficult to find, but I would almost think that maybe there's some information at the county treasurer level, because if the county treasurer is dispersing those funds, obviously there's got to be a trigger mechanism for them to say, hey, this money's going to go to other agencies. So I think we can look into that and see if we can figure out.
Something.
If that record exists and there's some, well, there's, fortunately, they're trying to be a disconnect between law enforcement agencies and courts, because the law enforcement agency, they put the case together, they give it to you, here it is, and they don't necessarily, aren't necessarily involved in gathering the information for this actual adjudication.
Sure.
That's what the, a little bit of the disconnect is, is that information that flows one way, it really doesn't come back down the other way, and that may make it difficult on occasion to try to, to try to close those gaps. We can think about if there's another agency or entity that they have that information already available, that we can go.
I think it would really help council be able to make a decision because conscientious of knowing where that money came from, that it is legally gotten. I mean, everything's fine with it, but that's just the proof. It's just like reading anything else, we've got it in front of us, so.
That's, I mean, it's basically what I was going to get at, you know? For me, it's not really about the expenditures. I think everything you're asking for is legitimate. You wouldn't be asking if you didn't need it. But it's, it's that comfort level of knowing, you know, every dollar we've gotten was obtained in a, in a way that was from a nefarious source, and that we don't have any, any Norman citizens that are casualty of the system. I just think that, you know, as long as we're doing our best to protect everyone and make sure that, you know, we're doing things the right way.
That is fair. That is fair.
So that's where I've come from.
Yeah, no, I, I think I would agree with that. I mean, I don't think that the, the request is unreasonable. I think my frustration comes with the previous conversation that we had, and I thought we asked for a more in-depth conversation and presentation about, you know, which is why I think there were so many questions about what can they be used for, what, how, how are we getting them, all of that stuff? And so it, it wasn't necessarily about the request for police cars, because I do think that that is a reasonable request, as is body cams and other materials that are needed from the PD. I think it was just really that we're trying to have a full understanding of the concept and what, where this money is coming from, like, you know, other council members have said, so, like, I don't, it wasn't really about police cars not being an, a thing that can be expended or is, is appropriate. Because I do think that our citizens would agree that that is a public safety item, we need our police officers to have proper vehicles, not only to protect them, but to protect our citizens. So, yeah, I think my frustration more was around just like how the presentation, I guess, came to us and the conversation as we were trying to have it. And it did divert, I think, into a little bit of a, maybe not necessarily, so I apologize for cutting you off earlier. I really just wanted to get out this idea that, like, we, all of the conversations about this become contentious, and I don't think that they necessarily have to, was really the, the point that I was trying to make, is like, I think we're more on the same page than we all realize, but I think we have to do our due diligence when really understanding specifically about these, where they're coming from and how, you know, appropriate, like, we can spend them.
Most of our funding streams are well-understood. It comes from sales tax, it comes from.
Exactly. This one is just really a bit more kind of nuanced and clouded, and so just really for us to be able, and then for our citizens to understand kind of what, what that process looks like, because I don't think that every layperson, you know, is deeply invested in understanding forfeiture.
Unless they've gone through the, through the process it was given. And I've got friends of mine who are, who make you look like a lightweight when it comes out. They, they hate it. And others on the other side that, you know, think it's perfectly fine way of doing things. So let us, we'll get that information, what information we can. It may not be the whole 100 and, what was the number? 1,000,0050 that we, we come up with, but, you know, the better part of that, so that we can know, we can see that trend. We can see that, that, that thing and, and, and come to, be able to come to a, a good conscious answer. Any other questions for Deputy Chief? Oh, yes, sir.
Might be Rick or might be Anthony, I don't know. I was interested to find that there is more leeway as far as what we can potentially use it for. I know you recommend that we stick to a specific area, but the law seems to say that we could use it pretty, a wide discretion if we wanted to. We have used it for, like, fire or department-related stuff. Is that, like, if, if we wanted to, could we use all of it to go towards Fire Station 5?
You're asking a cop to give up money to the fire.
That's.
Asking Rick.
That might, that might create an incentive, the police don't take it. They don't want to give the fire department any. But just wondering if it could be, if that's the direction.
I think the whole answer to that question, a lot of time has to do with unsettled areas of law, and whereas we might do something with regards to fire department, it might not really take that much. If you did something like that, that might cost somebody a lot of litigation, and you need to get it in return. You talk about it from the perspective of, you can create good law, you can create bad law. So we're giving advice along those lines, just like, you know what, this is how we've done it in the past, we seem to have one hand up difficulty. The more you get away from that, the more likely it is you may run into some difficulty. So, the answer is, yeah, possibly, but I'd recommend it if you had some other options to come.
Good. Well, I appreciate it, appreciate it, chief.
Any other questions for deputy chief? Thank you, sir. And thank you for bringing this to us. Let's take a five-minute break, and I'll come back with my stuff.
Ask me a question? None of that's been found in Norman this year.
All right. Good. It's not a story for us then. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, chief.
You know, that's so cute.
Hi.
Brian.
We went to District.
How many more meetings?
What am I doing?
We were kind of, well, clearly
Difficult choices that I have made figuring out, trying to get the suggestions that you guys came down to for populating these two committees and doing it correctly. And basically, the criterion that I, criteria that I used to be able to define who was on what committee and why was education. You don't have a page that I have, and I'll pass it around because it's got, it's got private information, but I didn't want it to get, oh, I didn't even get my own. It, it has people's education levels, and that's what I used as a criteria to, one of the criteria, to pick people that were on there. I tried to, as best as I could, make sure that, I've lost my page, dead gummit. No, it's on the spreadsheet, but it, we didn't print that page off on purpose, and I made it. What I was really amazed at, when I started looking at people, and I was really thrilled about the fact that we're in Norman, Oklahoma, and not in somewhere else, was how many educated people we have that were interested in doing things that, that are here. And in that, oh, here it is, right here. I don't even know what I've got. And I'll pass this around. It's two pages, one for Strong Towns and one for the comp plan. But it really impressed me what the education level was. And then, then it was kind of surprising to find out, you know, when I thought about other things to look at that might be an experience. I spent a lot of time sending people to Iraq and Afghanistan, and one of the things that I had to do in, when I did that job, was make sure that the mission of that unit that was going had all the skills that it needed to be able to do what was there. It didn't have anything to do with anything else, but it was that skill set. So that's kind of the, the logic that I used on this one. Bringing people around that had the skill set that I needed to be able to do things. And the other thing that I looked at was how well they worked with other people. One of the things that I'm afraid of, if afraid is the right word to, to use, is that some people would try to take over the conversation for some reason, whatever, one issue that they wanted to do, one, one whatever. I wanted people that could work cooperatively, together, to be able to make this committee work. I would like for us, as a final product, to be able to present something to the people that is acceptable, that is rational, and that looks ahead for the next fifteen, twenty years. Frankly, at this point, I'd like to tell you, one of the things I want to make sure that we do with the comp plan is that we make ourselves review that every five years. We either do that with a, with an ordinance, or we put it in the plan, or we will figure out some kind of way to do it. But we don't go like we have been, where it's not been addressed and not been updated, and, and that's, that's the expensive way to do things, but, but it all works. I wanted to look at experience in Norman, so I spread some of that out. You'll see that there are voting and non-voting people. When we, when we look at that, what I tried to do was limit the size of the committee, because when a committee gets too big, it's like an elephant with two heads, it, it just doesn't work. So there, everybody can participate, but there, when we need to make a decision, the voters in that, on that committee will be in there. One of the other things I wanted to do is make sure that we are directly involved in that committee. Pick what you want, or pick both of them, that we sit down and we are, we understand the product that's coming out so that the product doesn't get into something we, we don't want, and we, we put it on the shelf. That's happened before and stuff. Another group that's in there that was picked is a group of partners. These are partners of, of people, these are OU property people, these are Cleveland County Commissioners, Chamber of Commerce, Visit Norman, Sooner Mall, Sooner Centurions, MNTC, Norman Public Schools, Oklahoma Academy, the, the lady at, at OU that takes care of economic development for OU, and the partnerships that come from that, Hitachi Ventara, and hopefully Governor Johnson hadn't answered me yet, but the absentee Sean E. Tribe, David Nemo would, would give us input from the Chickasaw Tribe if he chooses to, and then NEDC. They're a non-voting group, but they'll be there for our advice, for those questions that we want to ask as to why do we do it this way? And you'll see in this org chart that I've cobbled together, that one of the other things that, that I thought that might happen in this is that I, I want us to direct the committees, but I want staff to be directed by the department heads. That's why we have them here. Our, our way of getting to staff is through the manager, like it is with anything else. We want the deputy chief, we ask the manager to get us the deputy chief. That, that kind of thing, to keep that up. Partners are not voters, they're advisors to all of us. I want us to be able to bring in somebody, you say, we're, we're talking about one kind of architecture or something, bring in somebody that is an expert in that field, be, bring in the Peter Petramelli, Petramelli, and, and say, explain this to us, but he doesn't get to vote, he gets to talk. And, and any other person that kind of gets in the committee, I hope the committees are very, very public. Haven't figured out a meeting schedule yet because I'm leaving a lot of stuff up to the department chair, I'm not, excuse me, I'm using the wrong word, up to the chairperson. Now that we've defined, I want to not, not be goofing up terms. The chairperson actually has a lot of trust from us in, in, in what they do. They should be able to remove a person if the person's disruptive or won't work with everybody else or something like that. They should be able to remove a person if they don't, if persons don't show up. I don't want them appointing off the street. I want us to make that decision all the time, and if, if we need to put somebody on there. Does it have to be ward specific? I don't know that we want to lock ourselves into that, but yeah, it is part of the conversation if somebody from Ward Four fell off and somebody. The hard part I had was finding people from Ward One. When I mapped out the education, guess where that came from? Three, six, eight. Right. That's, that's where most people that applied were. And I go, oh, that's not making sense. So we had, yes, ma'am.
I was just curious with the person I thought was in five that's marked as one, were all these like?
I've, I tried to vet all those addresses.
Evans.
Evan Rank?
Yeah, she's a comp plan
Siobhan Evans.
Um, I
Oh, Evans.
Looked them all up, I thought.
Yeah, I tried to, too.
She's going to do a reapportionment, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah, I think she got moved to
I tried to, and I, I looked at that.
I'll put a star by her since she's in one that might actually be harder to get.
Yeah, I actually had two. One was a realtor and one is a banker. They may both be realtors, I'm not sure. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm looking at the list too again, too. So we have twenty-two and twenty-three in the comp plan vacants.
Yes.
And I only see two people from Ward Five selected as voting members, and I see one very good person in Ward Five, actually two, if you include Mr. Atkinson, as non-voting members here. So, why the disparity between the, the members of the ward, like Ward Six has a bunch of folks
Seven.
Sitting on this too as well. So, there's a big disparity between the wards. I think Ward Five has a lot more to lose when it comes to the comp use and the land plan. Is there a possibility we can fill those two last positions with the Ward Five in the big list?
I could see one, but the problem is, it has to be in pairs because you have to have an odd number. When you have a committee, if you had a committee, that's a committee of twenty-one. If we put it in as a committee of twenty-two, then you're never going to be able to come down if it was a fifty-fifty vote kind of a thing.
So, there's, there's actually not any Ward Seven residents on the comp plan. David Kennard lives in Ward Four.
Uh, yeah, but, yeah, he is a Ward Four. Maybe we might need to double check the wards.
Well, I, I checked him as many times as I could.
Yeah, so between Wards One, Five, and Seven, there's only
So why is
Three people.
But is the necessary thing to fill them up by the ward or to fill them up by the education?
Well, representation of the whole section of the city, the fastest growing part of Norman is southeast Norman.
Yeah.
And there would be nobody from that area on this.
I would have to agree with him too, is that education is important, mayor, but I think the representation is equally important to show there as well. I, I just think that, that Ward Seven and Ward Five are underrepresented.
If I had, well, and should I take somebody off of the Strong Towns, which has more, because I only got the certain amount of applications, you know, I didn't, a lot of these aren't, here's the applications. And so, I've got to choose by who asked to be on that. I don't disagree with the
Did everybody on here turn a resume in their application?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good.
Almost everybody. I, we're having one, Brian Hildgenfeld, I keep on having trouble getting him to
Did you get one from Tara Casillas?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good, good.
And, and I spoke, I spoke to a lot of these people or wrote them, one of the two, because I was making sure that their address was the same. We found one person whose address varied from what they said they were, and I, I took him out, he was eight, and, and just so that it doesn't get in there. It just, I want to make it as fair as you think it ought to be.
Because I'm, I'm thinking, well, I, I'll finish my thought, go ahead.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think it's a little hard telling, which, I, I kind of do think Siobhan is in Five, and I know her from, she was on Affordable Housing Town Hall.
Yeah, yeah.
And I found out from folks with Norman Next that she's actually been, what was it that she did for Norman Next, Warren?
She was their president.
President. So like a real great skill set for being in a comp plan committee, and I feel, you know, like for Five, as the realtor who was thinking about affordable housing and whatnot, like, and, you know, the comp plan's pretty important for us
It is.
When we get these interesting developmental things.
She, I'm looking up her, Siobhan, it says Ward One. Did I goof that up?
What's her address?
What's her address?
Yeah.
That.
Yeah, I know she used to live in Ward Five, but redistricting might have put her in somewhere else.
Could be.
I know. Uh, well, I just know that David was in Four, so maybe there's some ones that might not be quite.
Sure is that. Okay, so she's southeast of Lindsay and Twenty-four.
She is Five?
Yes.
Who is Five?
That used to be Ward One, but it's not anymore.
It's Five. Just Siobhan Evans is in Ward Five.
I think she'd be a great addition to the comp plan.
Behind Blake Reagan.
Well, we move Siobhan up to Twenty-two, then Dr. Hirschfeld.
And make it Twenty-three?
We'll make it Twenty-three and break the tie.
Yeah, as long as it, it, as long as we got a way to break a tie. I have no problem with that.
Well, see, now you got more with Ward Eight.
But do we want to try to get some students?
And I still don't have any.
I know.
Do you want?
David doesn't live in Ward Seven.
Yeah, he doesn't, he's in Four for sure.
The only other person, the two other persons that
I think he did live in Ward Seven before.
I must have an old deal.
He was on Chautauqua, and I think he, I forget what side of the street, but I think he got taken out of the redraw.
Yeah, on Strong Towns, I put there are two students
Yes.
That live for Seven. And the reason that they're in there is not because of their education, but because of what we can do for their future by letting them participate in this.
Well, and, and to the fact that a large number of our community are students, and I think that they should have a, a voice at the table, so I think that it is important to have the student representation.
I would
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and it's, and it's another way too, that, you know, I can say, well, I think students want, but students can speak.
Well, I mean, we're, that's the audience that we're trying to capture long-term to be Norman citizens for their life, not just while they're in college, and so giving them ownership of something like this.
And so, I'm, if I, well, I hate to open up more applications because, what do you advise on that? What's your pleasure on it? If we open it up for more applications from just one ward, I think, think I'm excluding
That's a slippery slope.
Yeah, and, and then all of a sudden
They keep coming in too, guys.
We got two
Well, I mean, to that point, I think
They're Fives.
Is that, was that Mayor?
The two that we got in are Fives.
Yeah, the, the nurse, the ICU nurse
Nurse and transportation guy.
Yeah.
And so, they're Fives, but another seven
I, I would def, I definitely want Derek Rosenthal on there.
Well, my
He's moved to Ward Four recently, which is a deal, but he's lived in Ward Seven for fifteen years.
Yeah, and, and, we can always correct my chart. His, his, um, he has a, kind of a one agenda guy, and when I read Facebook and, and stuff and looking these people up, looking at the idea that we're all, not, we all got to get together and be happy, but that we're, when we're bringing diverse viewpoints to something, that those are reasonable, not my way or the highway kinds of, of arguments. And so, he's kind of pointed in some, in some parts, if I put him on the comp plan, he will try to, I anticipate that he would try to drive the conversation one, one direction.
Stephen, what's his PhD in?
Meteorology. Meteorology. Yeah, he's a smart guy.
He's, I mean, one of the reasons I asked him though is because he has thoroughly pointed out a lot of deficiencies in our twenty-twenty-five plan.
Yeah.
And so figured someone having, having somebody that.
I have no problem with.
Look at the problems we had and maybe try to.
Well, now these people aren't, aren't, aren't going to have to sit in separate rooms. But it's the voters that, that basically can help that process where we get in person. Cause there are times, I mean, uh, Dr. Serrato is not the, the quietest person in the world. And, uh, and, but she's, she's a professional engineer and understands a lot of things that go on. No reason why Derek cannot advise the comp plan people on the stuff he understands about climate, all these other things that he's brilliant at. But to put him in a position where he was voting on that would draw, could drive them to make decisions that weren't necessarily ours. It's my thought process. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to speak to, I guess, the process leading up to this. Since we're still getting applications, I don't know that, I, I think it's been a moving target for all of us to understand, like, when the deadline was, how could we appropriately tell our residents when, you know, the absolute deadline to get your application in? Or, and then we had some difficulties in the very beginning with, um, municode and not adding, you know, the dropdown for comp plan or for Strong Towns. Like that took a bit of time, um, because there was like an error on the backend. So I think that it's been a little challenging for residents to understand, like, what is the process moving forward? Um, and when they would actually have to get deadlines, you know, the deadline to actually get applications in. So I'm not surprised that there are still applications that are kind of filtering through. And then another thing, I know that we have applications that are loaded that we can see. But I think there are some people that are still on the list that I don't see added in. And it might just be that some of them submitted resumes and didn't go through, um, the portal. So I just want to make sure that we've got those resumes on there as well, so that we can look and, and vet, so.
Who are those? Terry Van Michael.
I've got one for him, I just, uh, so one is for one of my people who, um, just submitted a resume, didn't go through the online thing.
Erin, I know you have a resume for her.
Erin's on here.
Um, you're right, I'm just saying, I know she's not in here, so like other council members wouldn't be able to see her resume. I think I haven't found one for Shay Wesson on here.
Shay Wesson's is, is still, he, he just won't do it. He keeps on getting there, he's PhD, he's not a PhD, he's PhD candidate.
Okay.
Mechanical engineering, and so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that like, as you've outlined in this kind of first page, which is the first time I think that any of us are speaking kind of and talking about the way that you've tried to put the committees together. So I, I appreciate kind of understanding what your thought process is and like how all of this went, um, through. But, you know, I think it's challenging, again, for our citizens to really understand, like, what is, what is the vetting process going to be? They submit their application, when was the deadline, when it wasn't? There are some people that are, you know, listed on here that haven't submitted an application. So I think it feels like a bit of a moving target. Um, and to the point, like as we start thinking through, like, oh, move this person over here. And I think that that can become really challenging. And I think we all wanted to avoid having, you know, discussions about our residents that are so willing to put forth themselves for, you know, both for comp plan and Strong Towns for a two-year process that's going to be really intense. And, um, I don't think that us, you know, having conversations, I don't want it to be viewed as, you know, us devaluing any of the contributions. You know, I'm just kind of voicing this out loud because I think that that's how we all feel. We don't want to devalue, um, the contributions that our community members will make to these processes. So just wanted to kind of say that, I just want to make sure that we're all operating from a place of understanding. Like what are the, um, I guess, this really helps to understand, like how we're trying to move forward. But it's a lot to, I guess, input into and like, think about just on the fly as like we just get it right before, I guess, right now. Before the meeting. Um, so I would have liked to had time to kind of.
And there's, there's not a problem.
Yeah, just like decompress about all of this.
To get the nominations nominated tonight, uh, kind of a thing, or, or agree with it. But I'm taking your airspace.
Hold on, I'm not, I have one more question for you, just about, um, the workflow of, um, this kind of organizational chart that you've put forward. Cause I know we had talked about very, I guess, in concept, in theory, about how council would be involved. And so can you talk a little bit? Cause at first it was like, oh, we might be on that group of kind of partners or advisors and like. So can you explain to me like how we're going to be involved in the process? Like where we sit, how, how does, how does the information filter back up to us? Like in your envisioning of how that would function?
My thought is, and this is, and I'm not going to force anybody on council to, to go to all the meetings or do the homework or do the, the other thing. Some people got kids, I'm lucky, my kids are grown. So anyway, it just, it's a different thing. What I would love for us to be able to do is be participants in all those meetings. Add to that or, and be able to say, well, you're forgetting something about this or that and, and.
So would you see us as kind of ad hoc members of both of the committees? Is that allowable? Or does that have to be explicit? Like we have to state like, these council members are on, on the comp plan as an ad hoc, uh, uh, non-voting ad hoc member. Ex-official, yes, sorry. Yes, that's the word I was looking for.
Well, that gives us no vote.
Right, but, I mean, we will ultimately vote to approve plans.
As well, so anyone can attend. We've talked about whether or not we should have an executive committee and then have a comp plan committee and a Strong Towns committee. Um, and I think the executive committee was maybe where some of this discussion was going to come up.
It was Strong Towns.
Yeah.
Strong Towns came up with those definitions. Cause it was confusing to us what they were asking for. We sat down at a table and kind of sketched it out as to who belonged to what, where and why. And, uh, and that's where these, uh, three definitions that are sitting all the way to the left are, was to try to explain to them. My, my, my hope is that we're constantly involved in this. This is not a, not a, you're the contractor, you take care of it kind of a thing. Because who knows our wards? I don't have a ward, but who knows your wards better than, 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 than you do? And who knows what's in there? And there may be emergent reasons for that to be in. No single issue, I mean, single issues are going to try, try and drive this. And that's, that's a problem in committee. Because if you've got one issue driving or stopping something, uh, it, it, it doesn't give us the, the purest decision that comes out. So a lot of things like politics, I'm going to, no politics, not, there's none of this silliness. This is, I shouldn't say silliness, sorry. There's none of that kind of influence that should go in there and, and, and drive us to a decision. Because it's going to be completely different for Ward Three than it's going to be for Five. And, or, and anywhere in the mix thereof. And so, uh, I believe you, does that answer your question?
Kind of, yeah, I think so. I just, no, it's okay. I think Catherine was trying to explain like where our positioning would be. Yeah, open meetings, but yeah, I just, and ultimately we would vote on whatever the final recommendations are that are coming out. Um, but I know that many of us are deeply invested in both of these endeavors. And it's one thing that we've been really talking about. So I just want to make sure that like we are also as able to invest in the process as much as we, I guess, are able to, to, to be there, so.
And encouraged to do that.
Yeah, perfect.
I think that's our role in, in part of this decision-making process is to, to get us to a place that we can come up with something that we're proud of. And we're, we're going to define this as excellence. And, and hopefully it will be, that'd be excellent. And we're paying a lot of money to these contractors to do a lot of the hard work and the design, design work and stuff. We're paying wonderful staff people to be able to give us some things. But there are some questions that, just, uh, just, uh, clear the air that I really want to answer. How much, Chris will tell me how mu, he's not there. Chris will tell me how much water we have and all kinds of things. There's a limit to growth. Go back to LA, LA didn't pay any attention to that in the fifties, they just grew crazy. Now all of a sudden we have a drought over the last ten years. LA's in trouble, how do we get water? Well, we don't have a seed that we can run desal plants on. We don't have a lot of other things. So what creative ideas are we going to do? Or are we going to limit growth to what we can, what we can actually do? How many cars can we put on the road? How many, all these hard decisions are projecting this stuff out twenty years. Uh, some of this stuff is going to be witchy. We're going to make an educated guess by mathematics. That's called statistics and that's not really mathematics. And so it's just, how do we, how do we make those work? And those are the kind of decisions that I hope we're making to be able to guide. Because they're going to be looking at the statistics, these people that are on here are going to be making, look, a look at the things that are statistics themselves. You know, this population density, this kind of, they'll be doing that kind of work, which is wonderful. I can't remember who put their hand up first because I was jaw jacking.
Okay, so I'm going to respectfully, uh, disagree on the Derek Rosendahl. I think what you've kind of described as like one-minded, I think, is passion. I think he understands climate, I think he's lived the experience of when comp plans go wrong. And I think his education, his investment to everything that he's done is super important. And I would contrast that with the person leading the lawsuit against him is on it, Sean Rieger. He stands to benefit quite a bit, um, doing what he does. I mean, he's, he's Norman's guy, right? For that, so to not have Derek, but to have Sean instead, I think, does not really give a very, what was the word I'm looking for, a very, uh.
It's not balanced.
Yeah, like I, I think they, I don't think Derek's going to go in there like guns blazing, like flooding, you know, sort of thing. But I do think that having lived the experience and seeing the erosion and, and all that, I do think that someone with his passion and determination would be really, really important. And have Sean in there, not him, I just think is, is not right.
Not balanced.
Right.
All right, I, I have no problem with that. What say the rest of you? You want me to move him over there? Don't we move him over there? I mean, I'm saying.
He and Sean can, uh, come friends.
Me, I don't like Sean, it's not personal against Sean.
Derek and Sean can become friends. I think there's some counterbalance to go on with that, I mean, that's, there would be some value to the committee.
But then I need to put another person up here in, and, and if I put him as in, if I put him in as twenty-two.
I think Siobhan would be good for twenty-three.
So the breakdown right now is that there's twenty-one and Wards Six, Three and Eight make up fifteen of those twenty-one.
Hey, no.
I like the people I see in those wards on here, just saying.
What had happened was we had a lady, um, pull her, um, pull her application. Nothing wrong with her, she's a wonderful human being, it's just her mom's not well. And so she had to pull hers, that meant I had to pull two, uh, to be able to do that. That's, it's just math more than it is anything else. You want Siobhan on there? He wants Tara Tassi?
Well, it's Dr. Hirschfeld, um, you know, we're going by, I don't know Siobhan. But again, we're looking at people with, with interest and if we're looking at pure data, we, we, we want a committee full of people just looking at the data and making the best decision without any influence. That's one thing here, but I'm just saying that on, when we started this process, I'm with her, I'm with Lauren, I thought that we would give preference over the folks that we submit from each of the wards. And, and I did submit a lot of names and, and I don't see a lot of those names on this list. And I see a lot of names and, and I'm not knocking any of the wards here. I'm looking, if, if this is a representative, a representative part of, of the population for the, for, for Norman to participate fairly and equally, then we either start with a, the same number of people from the wards and start there and look at education, look at background and so forth here.
Yeah.
So I just see this, just right now, just, I'm just being honest with you and everyone here, is that, um, you know, I'm seeing lots of disparity and, and nothing against you, Elizabeth, but Ward Six is a lot of folks.
They do.
And, and so.
But we agree the most in the last sentence.
Ward Three has thirteen names on here.
Huh?
Ward Three has thirteen names, it's the most of any ward.
In all, um, honesty, there were certain wards that just didn't have applications come in.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, and the, some of the names that you all submitted, they did not submit applications.
Yeah.
You submitted their names, but they didn't follow up and submit any applications for, uh, him to review. Um, and there, there were tons of applications from Six and from Three and Eight. And they just weren't coming in from the other wards. We had.
So are we locked into this tonight? Can we just, can we move this for another study session to look at the names again?
We can do what you want, what I'd like to do is get down to an eighty percent solution. If you want me to move, uh, Derek Rosendahl over into, into twenty-two, then who do you want me to go to twenty-three with? And make those decisions. So I've got something that I'm not thinking about anymore. I have spent nothing but time contacting.
Could we up it to twenty-five people on each? Or is that overkill?
It's kind of overkill from my experience with committees.
But we filled them with the other wards, like cut off Three, Six and Eight. And just said, why now?
Hey, I've got three of twenty-four on here, that's an eight.
So, uh, nothing stops us from the process. One of the things that does not help us is that, uh, this little con, uh, this little set of dates down here is that Strong Towns wanted February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth as a kickoff. So I'm, backtrack that, we've got to write letters, we've got to get them back. It is a pain in the, communicate with people and get letters back, just like it was with this. So there's a, a big time, I was trying to preserve that, but if you want, we can talk to, uh, to Strong Towns and kick them back there.
I'd, I'd be fine with, if you have to replace any of these with an alternate, if those alternate came from the underrepresented wards.
Yeah.
Which is by default, you don't, you don't go to Six, Three and Eight.
I have no prob, that next generation, the reason I'm kicking things back now is because this would go on forever. And, and, and basically, uh, I had stopped, uh, on, on the fifteenth. And then we had some good applications come in, uh, that were there, we talked about it beforehand. I said, okay, well, we'll get this. And we had a lady fall out, you know, it's, it's just, this is just typical of list making. And so this particular list, um, is, is a derivative as of last night, uh, of this. And I can make that change without a problem. Now, you're just talking about moving the mouse, uh, to make him go over there. Who do you want, if I move him, who do you want out of? And I wouldn't choose Shay because I, I still don't have that, that thing, but I'd like to have him on that. I don't have his, uh, thing, I don't mind him being nominated, but I wanted to be able to prove to you why I made that choice. And that's what this stack of papers is. And, uh, and so.
I mean, Siobhan was like the number one Keller Williams Realtor in the state of Oklahoma last year. Like she's kind of a big deal in Norman.
She's deeply invested.
Very invested in it.
I think Dr. Hirschfeld, it's actually, you know, she, I know her, I don't know Siobhan. And I think she come down to, to the, who I know for Ward Five. You guys can talk about your wards and who you'd like to have to represent your ward. I know she's in Ward Five, I don't know her. I go, Dr. Hirschfeld, and she's been wanting to be on this committee for a while here, she does have the expertise.
And I just got to think, yeah.
Because we were looking for names, there were some names on there that were questionable that we, that you had an issue with. And so that, that list that was sent earlier was kind of pared down by half. And so, um, I would prefer to see Dr. Hirschfeld fill that position if we're going to move somebody from the Strong Towns over to the comp plan.
You gotta let Ellen talk.
No, I was just going to say, I, it's no problem because I was actually counting up who actually has their things. I think the list might need just some review to make sure like all the wards are then. Um, and then some that I have over in comp plan, their resume is in Strong Towns. Um, but I mean, we're working on it, we get a chance to like sort them into the right folder so that when it comes time, all of us have had a chance to see who's where and where their resumes.
Some of them applied for both.
Yeah.
I mean, several of them applied for both.
I use them by skill set, find that skill set, uh, I'd say all I need. Cause it's, it's hard. There's actually, uh, another meteorologist, I can't remember.
Is it either.
Corey Godin.
Yes, Godin.
I was also going to say.
That I put in there when I.
Strong Towns, I think that's the one he applied for too, I think.
Um, for balance too, like, nothing against Michael Ridgway, he's great, he's on the HRC and whatnot. He's also in Five and you could. He's also in 5, and you could, like, put Siobhan in his place and make him an alternate, since he's already on committees right now. And I'm pretty sure she's not on 1, so...
She does live in 5, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she lives by Reagan.
Has been in the past. I don't know if she's...
Why are we picking Ward 5 people here? That should be my choice too as well. I mean, Michael Ridgway is, you know, he is smart. He has been on committees before and would bring tremendous value. I've known him for a long time.
He's an attorney, and that's why, that was a skill that I used on there, was to make sure that we've got somebody that can read.
He's not the only attorney there. You have Sean Rieger. Him, Michael, and Si- him and Siobhan and I all were on a board together. So, yeah, I mean, I just think that this is, this is why I said earlier
that, like, this is going to be really challenging when we, when we start pitting community members and ward versus ward against one another, because it looks like we are disparaging members of our community as we're going through this process. And I think we all would like to avoid...
That's why I use skills.
That.
Skills are, have absolutely no taint to them whatsoever. They're just what a person is not. Now, there is, you can make the argument that, that some kids get to go to school, you know, right out of high school. Some of us had to go later when the Navy paid for it. And so there's some disparagement in there. But these people are obviously, particularly with masters and PhDs, are, are obviously skilled in doing what they're doing. They're, they're the best thinkers we've got, and that's kind of how I chose it. And I forget who went first.
I think Matt.
I was basically going to say what Lauren just said. And that, like, I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to sit here and parse out individual names and talk about the merits of one over the other. I mean, um...
It's really hard.
It really is hard. And I don't think it's fair to the people that we're discussing individually, so, um...
Stellar.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's very hard to make that. It was much easier, particularly in the service, because we all had numbers for the skill sets that you want. You, you bring those skill sets down, and then you can bring those things up. We don't have that in civilian life. So a lot of it, to me, ward doesn't make a difference. What makes a difference to me is the ability for those community, uh, those committees to be able to sit down, work together, and come up with an excellent product, so...
You know, just for clarification, um, do you want to see resumes for everyone too as well? I thought it was either a resume or, or an application.
Yeah.
Brenda, so is it, is it, is it either or? Or do you want to see a resume for everyone that we...
I would like for everybody, and to, to go through, Brenda, so we've got a record of it. Now, I've got, I've got one in there that's Terry Vanwinkle's, and he, he's...
I have a, I have an application for him. But it's not, I don't know that it's for this specifically, uh, but it still has all of his background on there.
Yeah, and it's just, this way, we have a document. Somebody didn't give me, something they pulled off, off the internet, whatever, since the internet's the bad guy today.
And I don't have resumes for everybody. Some of them are just applications.
So the last time we, I want to ask that question. Do they need to do a resume or the application? I didn't know they had to do both.
Does the app capture the resumes?
Because Lauren has to make, Lauren makes a good point that, like, Dr. Hirschfield doesn't have a resume, but she's a doctor, you know, PhD.
We don't have an application in here.
She give, she, you got her resume then?
I have a resume. I don't have, I may have.
So the discrepancy that I'm talking about is that the applications that came in are in our folders, but if we got resumes just by themselves submitted, they are not in our FTP folder.
Some of the, our resumes are attached to the application.
No, I understand that. My point is that if they, if they didn't go...
Like, we individually?
If they didn't go through the application online and we just sent resumes, they are not in the FTP folder.
If I got them, they should be. So that one that you sent me for Aaron Rice, that was just a mistake, so I'll have to go back and find it.
So I don't, I don't see Dr. Hirschfield in here?
I don't remember getting that. Did it come today?
It came today or yesterday, 1:31 at, uh, 7:55 PM.
Who else are we missing? Because Helen, Helen...
I mean, you're missing...
I mean, you look at the lady...
I'll check all the ones I have. If I don't have them...
But that's, a lot of it, and a lot of it's a question too. We're doing a technical document, and so there were questions I had. Some of these, these people were HR guys, industry workers, uh, that kind of, things that I, I don't associate with engineering. I think of a comp plan as engineers, physicists, those, uh, geophysicists, uh, those kind of people. So, but they can add flavor, and they can add other things. It, it's not just hard technical skills to be able to do it. It, it's a, it's a, it's a daunting problem, but one that I solve that way. But you still haven't told me. Who's number 23? I know...
Who's number 22? I forgot.
Who's number 22 is Derek Rosendahl.
I, I'd like to see 23 for Dr. Hirschfeld.
Okay. Who agrees or disagrees with him?
It's fine with me. That's who Rashard wants to have from Ward 5 on there.
Well, I mean, I just campaigned the hell out of Derek Rosendahl, and he's not in 6. All right, so, I mean, Siobhan would be the pick for me. I mean, would you mind of 6 being replaced by Siobhan? Since we have to even, I mean, like...
I don't want to take people off the list that have already matched. Is that what you're talking about, moving them?
Uh, well, and I was going to say, her stuff is in there too, because, like, at the end of the day, one of our thresholds can be, did they submit everything? And if they didn't, then even if we did put them on the list, then they didn't go through the process to actually be on there, if that makes sense. Like, where's their resume? Where's their application?
Oh, yeah, that's all here. That's all there is.
I'll double check. I'll just have to go, what, through them all tomorrow?
Okay. And I'm sure there's some, I'm like, no judgment, because I know that I've added to your pile, but, um... So these are all people you've already confirmed and spoke to? Like, hey, I'm going to put them on there.
What I said was nominate.
But, right. Not, you're totally on it, but this is where we're going.
Yeah, this is where, oh, dear.
Because I think a determining factor could be if somebody does, if you nominated them, but they didn't turn anything in, and we don't have anything to look at in our folder before the vote.
Taken off the list.
Right.
Guaranteed. If I couldn't get anything out of them, and that's why I'm talking about Shay West, if he doesn't get something to me, he said, oh, yeah, I'm going to do that, and I'm going to get that done.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's a, that's a clear, um, show of intent to, you know, participate if you can't do this one thing that has been asked. So, like, I think that's, that's a fair benchmark to say...
Sure, disqualified.
Disqualified if someone, at this point, hasn't submitted, um, the proper paperwork. And I think that you're on that, it sounds like you're on that same...
Same beam, yeah. And, and, and the thing is, is, is I want, you know, Mindy's not here anymore. I want to be able to prove it in the meeting. I want somebody to be able to come up here and challenge. Why did you put so-and-so on there? Well, this is why. These are, these are put in by the groups. The reason I don't want to move people is because of the skill set. If they move up and down in the same line, uh, that, that doesn't make any difference. But moving him over there is going to be a pain in the neck. And you still haven't told me who the 23rd is.
Is there going to be a vice chair on comp?
There will, but I'm letting the chairs nominate their vice chair.
So on Strong Towns, we have a vice chair listed. Is that Cameron has...
Cameron chose her.
Okay.
And, and if, if you haven't met her, she is absolutely wonderful.
That's a home run selection.
Oh, yeah.
Ward 6. But I don't want to draw attention. Look, I feel underrepresented the last 2 and 1/2 years, so...
Well, the, the thing is, is I think that's where most of the people who graduate and have started families and stuff move to, it's the lea, the newest areas, the newest everything that are up there. And frankly, it's, it surprised me, uh, that, that was in, uh, who was where when it came down to everything. And it, and it's banned around the outside, um, 3, 6, and 8. And, and it, it, nobody from 1. We were digging to find people from 1 to get on there, because when Brandy left, there was no communication with her, and we got what we could. And I'd be so relieved, somebody had come in and, oh, that's Ward 1, now 1's a 5.
Sean Williams Jennings is like the only name I can even think of. Or Jablonski, or...
Yeah. And, and the thing is, is, is we're going to be replacing. If you think about this list, in general, for most committees, you're going to attrit at least 30% of this list. It'll just happen. People have parents, and jobs and stuff, and, and it's more, more than they want. And we're going to be doing this process again. So, again, I don't think, unless you absolutely make me, uh, we need to do it by ward. I think we need to do it by talent. So, anyway, sorry.
Uh, I think I, a mix of that, I think, is how I feel. My only concern about not having some sort of ward-specific threshold is that, you know, I said about southeast Norman, class in Highway 9 areas may be the fastest-growing part of Norman, and there'd be nobody on the comp plan that lives anywhere around there. Derek used to, so he's got some experience.
Sure.
Uh, but just that if it's made up of most of the people from wards 3, 8, and 6 that are on the kind of complete opposite side of the city, how many of those folks are very familiar with southeast Norman? And the issues that we have there, or the growth patterns, things like that? And so, and I would say the same thing if it was...
Yeah.
Any part of the city that was over, you know, way, outweighing. Just want to making sure that, because it's a long-range comp plan, that all sections of the city are being thoroughly, you know, thought about.
Is 3 landlocked now?
3 is landlocked, yeah. Yeah, 3 and 2 are land, 4 are all landlocked.
3 heavy on those?
1 pretty much, I don't know, it moved a little. That, that was where I started out, was...
They took a big chunk of the rural part out of Ward 1, yeah, so it's pretty well-developed too.
Oh, did we say this Mitch guy is not in 1?
No, you said David Kennard was in 4.
David Kennard's in 1.
So we do have someone in 1.
Yeah, they said, uh, it's, uh, Mitch Basemeyer.
Yeah.
I guess it's Basemeyer. Basemeyer, Beastmeyer, whatever.
I would've said Biesmeyer.
Biesmeyer.
There's nothing... Oh, no, sorry, I'm bad. She's in Strong Towns. No, I'm sorry.
Anyway, you have some...
Uh, in terms of the 23rd person, I want to make the decision based on merit, just like you've described. And so, given that they're both, both the choices are from Ward 5, I would love to be able to take the time to look at both those resumes and applications and kind of just make a decision, an objective decision on which is the most qualified.
You want to do that tonight?
I would prefer to not do it in public, but not, you know, just because I don't want to...
Then only, only 4 of us at a time.
Email them.
Yeah, I'll put them on your iPads.
I just don't want to have a discussion of pros and cons.
And I will tomorrow double check them all. And I just, I think, while I'm sitting here, I have their names and which committee, and there's 2 folders on your iPad, one for comp plan, one for Strong Towns. I'm going to, after I've verified all their wards, I'm going to put the ward number on their name as well, how I have it named, so you can find them faster. But, um, I'll go back through all of them again and double check the ones that I'm missing, and have them on there for you so that you can see them. I'll end of the day tomorrow when I have all the other stuff on there first.
So we want to keep rolling with this. Would doing this as a council conference next week make sense? And then, I don't, do we have...
Next week is a study session.
Oh, it's on the 5th Tuesday.
We could add, we could...
No, shouldn't it be, no.
Tuesday's a study session.
Tuesday's a study session. Oh, because we're off. Because that's...
That was a 5th Tuesday. So you have, uh... I think we have a couple of topics next Tuesday, a Rethelis report, and, um, a report on, uh, the latest Xenia Institute, um...
Talking nice to each other.
And so we could, I mean, we could add it to that, um, if you want to try to stick with the 14th, or if you want to push the kickoff for Strong Towns into March, you, give you more time, we can add it.
Push it off?
We're pushing it to get an agreement.
See? Staff comes in handy. Okay. So those dates are junk now?
I'll reach out to them tomorrow, so that they're scheduled.
Well, that gives us the slack.
The only, the only comment I'll have on that is that I thought it was really nice that the Strong Towns committee was getting a head start on the comp plan committee, so some of those lessons learned could have been implemented. So I don't want to stack them too close together, so we're not, you know, gaining the, the value of that information.
Agreed.
Sure.
And, and, and that was, that was part of the madness, was, was getting them going first and allowing them to make some decisions downtown, overarching decisions downtown. Because they won't necessarily control comp plan, but they will be able to definitely input into it as to what we want to do.
Yeah, they'll color the conversation, absolutely.
So we, uh, um...
I can add it to, um, the 14th pre-conference is, um, capital budget and one other topic that I can't remember that got added today, so that's pretty tight. Um, the 21st is a study session. It has some topics, can't remember off the top of my head right now, but you're not limited on time that night if we want to come back and wrap it up, because it's a study session night.
Oh, good.
You'll have plenty of time to vet all the applications, um...
Do you want me to leave these in the, in, in, on my desk?
Oh, I have them, I have them.
My only problem is I've got a real bone in my nose about personal information.
Sure.
And so I, I, that's why you haven't gotten them.
That's technically open record.
It's open record.
Oh, is it?
Yep, because they apply, yeah. It's okay. Um, I have them all, like, completely.
So you sign up for, you apply for things. So we, uh, we all agree to that, yeah.
Okay, well, and we've got that taken care of, because there's absolute, I mean, you will be amazed and thrilled as you look through most of these. There are some people that, that, that aren't as well-educated, not, that are on, on here,